Sorry.
All the regular meetings have been Blinco Board of Trustees, seven P M. On May twelfth, Blinco Town Hall. Roll call, Terry.
Here.
Skip.
Here.
Susan.
Here.
Sean is here. Consideration, discussion, possible action concerning entering into a legal service agreement with a town attorney for the town of Blinco. We have a couple that expressed interest. Both of those contracts should be in here. And Travis, he called me this afternoon and unfortunately is not able to make it. All of his contract is there to reenter. Do you have Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Sexton.
Her. And then John is on his way, he might be a few minutes late, but he did plan on being here. Okay. Well, Mr. Sexton, we can start with you if you want to stand up and tell us a little bit about yourself.
My name is Micah Sexton. I practice long in Stillwater. Been there for twenty-six years. Worked with, did work with Winfrey Houston and Lynn Osburn when they were there. Winfrey's deceased, Lynn retired last May. I've got two other guys in the office with me, Scott Thomas and Brian Plank. So we've got three people in our office. I represent the town of Ralston. Have for about four years now. So I'm pretty familiar with the way towns operate. I'm sure you all operate a lot like Ralston does. Ralston's, I just forget your budget, your budget's a little bit larger than theirs, but not tremendously different. They have lots of problems with their water system. They operate their own water system. They have a trust, public trust, to operate the water system. Like I said, we've got all kinds of things going on with that, trying to find grants to be able to do repairs to the water system. That's one of the main ongoing issues we have. So I deal with, you know, talking to public boards, that sort of thing on their behalf, you know, trying to find funding. Also done a lot of contracts for them. Other, I mean, just do stuff, worked on their town code a couple of different times. I mean, just kind of general stuff. So, you know, I'd love to represent you all if you let me. I've been a lawyer for thirty-six years total, twenty-six in Stillwater.
Any questions from the committee of board? Well, since we don't have your contract in front of us, what, what kind of rates are we looking at?
I'd have to decide. I normally charge Ralston like two twenty-five an hour. I mean, my normal rate's three hundred, just because I've been an attorney for thirty-six years. But I give Ralston a break, and I know you all have a limited budget. So like I say, I usually do about two twenty-five an hour for Ralston. I've got a norm, what I do is I normally charge them three hundred dollars to attend their regular town meeting once a month. Just a flat three hundred. And everything else that I do for them, I do on an hourly basis.
Okay.
Okay.
So that three hundred would cover mileage and...
Right, yeah. And I mean, if we're in a three-hour meeting, we do that again in Ralston a couple of times on certain issues, still is three hundred bucks. Okay? Because again, I understand you all have a limited budget. You're not, you know, flush with cash, so I try to help you all out the best I can.
Now, on your charging intervals, what, what is your interval time period that you charge on, you charge by?
Tenth of an hour.
Okay. Do we want to table this one for a moment and see if Mr. Andrews makes sense? Okay. So we'll, if you're good hanging out for, for just a bit.
Sure.
We would like to give Mr. Andrews an opportunity to speak as well.
Alright, thanks, dude.
So we will go back to item thirty. For consideration, discussion, and action concerning appointing the open board of trustees seat. You should have four applications in front of you. Do you guys want to give them an opportunity for those that are here to sit up and tell them, tell us about themselves? Jacob.
Name's Jacob Cabot, from this town, my whole life. Been here, most of you guys know me, my whole life. I got kids growing up here, later in this town. Just think I bring a lot of benefit to it. Thank you.
Jeremiah.
First of all, if we do have four open seats, I would like to call for an election. That way the people can decide, not just the board members. Secondly, I've done this job before, I've done it for two years. I've already had my O M A leadership certifications. I could just jump right into it. I've also lived here my entire life and have two kids growing up here in school, so.
Well, thank you. I don't think it's so random to come in and be under yourself here. Personal opinion, I tend to go with what Jeremiah's saying. We have four people that are interested in the seat. And my opinion is it's not our not to appoint who we want on this board. It's the community's job to vote for them on this board.
Just so you know, that'll cost fifteen hundred dollars.
Fifteen hundred dollars is what the cost of that is. Talk to the election board. The next elections that we can do for specials is September and November. So we have options there, and that'll have to be done by resolution. If that's your option, choose to go, we'll probably have to do a special for that set resolution. Because it'll have to be filed within the sixty days of the year. So I'm going to make a motion that we do not fill the seat tonight and we go to a special election of trust. Motion has been made in section. I'll favor Terry.
Yeah.
Skip. Susan.
Yes.
Sean votes yes. So what you'll have to do, and I will follow up with all four of the applicants and let you know when the filing period is. You'll have to go to Stillwater, to the election board, and to file for that seat during the filing period. And then it'll just go to the vote of the people inside the city. Any questions? Yes, sir.
Who was the other two?
Randy Clark and Andrew Mary. Mary. But I will reach out to both of them as well and let them know that we did not fill the seat tonight in a special election. Thank you guys for your interest. I really hope that you finally get put on the ballot for the people. I'm excited that we had four that expressed interest, that's exciting. Alright, so five is point six is the, actually, let's go back up to three if you all agree with that. Mr. Andrew.
Yes.
Would you like to tell us a little bit about yourself?
Sorry, guys, I have a Pontcharlton City Commission being managed to appeal a lot of nations. So I do a lot of work with cities. So I just, I just pulled in, this is my first time to come here, thank you guys. I served, Pontcharlton City is their city attorney for about seven and a half years. I went to Lawton, served as their city attorney for about nine months. And Lawton being Lawton, there were a lot of interesting situations down there. So I don't get into too many details, part of my separate degree in it. But I'm now in private practice servicing smaller towns. I'm working with Red Rock at the moment, working with East River Oklahoma County Medical Development Authority. Had a few jobs I've been doing for Piedmont, City of Piedmont, other cities. So I do have experience on board of the Oklahoma Association Municipal Attorneys. I teach open records, open bidding act, bidding act, those type of things to other city attorneys. So they're doing it for almost a decade, so. There aren't very many of us left, a lot of municipal attorneys that retired. So I'm always glad to hear from Blinco and excited to be here tonight. I sent you guys a draft copy of my contract, I just want to pack it. But unless you guys have any questions for me, I'm, I'm here to serve us tonight, so.
Everybody have a chance to look over this contract?
I do.
Any questions at all for it? And you are just a flat rate of two fifty, correct?
Yes, yes, I just bill hourly at two fifty, that's pretty standard municipal attorney wise. I don't require any upfront payment or any retainer. I've dealt with cities and towns long enough to know that I don't get skipped on at voices very often, so I'm not worried about that at all.
What do you charge for a city meeting? Is it two fifty an hour?
Just however long it takes. So what we do is we bill increments of six minutes, so one tenth of an hour, and it's twenty-five dollars. So that's typical attorney billing, it's just however long it takes for a project. Usually what I do when I first come onto the city attorney is I ask you guys for kind of a bullet points checklist of things you want me to look at, things you need to look at. Any types of, like with Red Rock, I'm going through their code right now, or getting ready to go through the code. Just any projects you have for me, we just invoice after the fact, hours, and kind of describe what all was worked on, so.
And that's something that we're going to have to be very tedious on, the fact that we were with Matt. And granted, he was not charging near what they're charging. So what we're used to in fees is essentially going to everybody double.
And I'm very efficient too with my time too, so pay turn out to be cheaper, I don't know. I try to be pretty efficient, I'm a pretty fast reader, can go through things.
Now, you're coming from Pontcharlton. Do you charge like a mileage?
I typically for towns and cities, I just do the federal, whatever federal mileage is, which is seventy cents a mile, which is not that far, so.
We gonna wait until we hear from Travis, or?
No, I mean, he, he said review the contract, and I mean, if there was any questions, I mean, we have the option to table and come back to any of the special work next month. But it scares me proceeding with much without.
I would recommend that we move forward and get an attorney. What if this goes down in thirty days?
I mean, not, or sorry, Travis is an attorney on Stillwater. Rates are merely the same. Same thing for mileage. I, I really like the aspect of the deep knowledge in open meetings, open records. Any thoughts? Is it any thoughts?
Well, I don't like John, you know, charging, if I understood him right, charging two hundred twenty-five dollars an hour for a city meeting.
No, it would be however long the meeting is. It would be, it would be, if the meeting is thirty minutes, it would be one twenty-five. It would be however long, if it's four hours, it would be, if it would be four hours, it would be, yeah.
I mean, it just means we're going to have to be efficient with our meetings.
Do you guys have a lot of four-hour meetings? I hope you don't have a lot of four-hour meetings. A lot of we had four-hour meetings, and they were brutal. I'm sorry, I forgot your name back there.
Micah Sexton.
Michael.
Michael.
Micah.
Yes. Do we need to make a motion? I wish.
There's no additional conversation?
And is there any more discussion? I'd like to make a motion that we support or nominate Micah Sexton as our city attorney. I'll say it, and I'll say it.
Okay, motion has been made in section to enter into a contract with Micah Sexton for municipal legal services for the town of Blinco. All in the paper, Terry?
Yes.
Skip?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Sean votes yes. So if you could get us a copy of your contract.
Yes, ma'am.
For us to kind of review and make sure everything is good there.
Certainly, I'll get that to you tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you very much, we appreciate it. So in that case that we don't have a contract signed, how does that look for this evening's?
I figure it's free tonight, since we don't have a contract.
Actually, I didn't hear what's happening.
This is a freebie tonight.
Fantastic, I love a freebie. Well, you are, you are welcome to join us up in the house. I will, I will share all of my stuff with you.
And I don't charge in terms of money, by the way. I actually live kind of on the, with the east side of Fisher or Stillwater, so I just jumped on Joe's road and ran over here.
Fantastic, and a little star, sir, because you're off to our, has a whole package for you.
Thank you.
Alright, we will move on to item six, consent agenda. Approval of amendments in the regular meeting held on April fourth, twenty twenty-five. Approval of many amendments for special meeting held on April twenty-ninth, twenty-five. Approval of general fund purchase orders, cemetery fund purchase orders, police fund purchase orders, major fund purchase orders, and municipal purchase orders. Does everybody have an opportunity to look over to that? Any questions on that?
I'd like to motion with Rudy, just to see. Second.
Motion has been made in section to approve consent in that all is favored, Terry?
Yes.
Skip?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Sean votes yes. Item seven is new point, item eight, public appearances, petitions, demonstrations, communications, and personal appearances. Anybody have anything that is not on the agenda tonight? And then we will move on. Nine is consideration, discussion, possible action concerning the presentation from Alexis Wolf with Oklahoma Water Resource Board concerning funding options for the lift station repairs and/or Wellington sewer project.
I might have to look at Donna, if I remember that. That looks like my first time while doing something like this, so. Thank you. This is just a handout, it's a little bit about our program. And then I also did, I didn't have a lot of information regarding exactly how much you're planning for, how long you might will in terms of be. But I did pull your twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-three audit, and it has all the information here. The maximum amount that you will to afford, and then it does our interest rates at the bottom. Okay. With the Oklahoma Water Resource Board, what we were able to do is we're able to get funding for your sewer system or end of station at this point, to help correctly fix it, repair it, everything else, and help with the Ralston addition if needed. We offer a forty percent discounted rate than what you can get the interest rate at the, through a bank. So if the interest rate at a bank is four percent, you can get to less for like three point six. So that makes it more feasible for, again, through O B R B, than saying going to the bank and getting that. So that's a lot easier.
Nobody?
We can do a term of the loan from anywhere from five years to thirty. We also take into consideration a year and a half time period, a year and a half of construction before we actually start the term of paying back the loan. But during that year and a half, you do have to pay construction interest on that for all your money that the disbursements that are done. Okay. Okay, so what I did on the financial analysis, I was under the impression you're only looking at the list station for now. So I talked to some of our other engineers and they said one fifty, unless you have an actual number. Last time we talked.
No, he suggested, he suggested getting with a different engineer company, and I'm not paying for that. Just get a number, so just go play with numbers.
Okay.
Until I need to actually get an engineer.
Yeah, so they said that they don't know anything about the system, but they said for smaller towns, you didn't, they've seen the repairs on the one fifty, don't quote me on that.
Yeah.
And then your last loan was for a term of twenty years, so I just took the one fifty for twenty years. Your last loan was, I think, two ten, but you only actually covered like one seventy. So your payments were around nine thousand, I believe.
I see you're right.
Yes. Um, so with this one, it was a hundred fifty thousand for twenty years, and then that was at three point one four percent. That includes our point five percent admin fee in there. So you're looking at about ten thousand. And then I have a fifteen, a twenty, and a thirty-year max of what you could afford. Right now, with your pledge plat, your last pledge collateral was water sewer and sanitation revenues. Anything above the thirty-year, the three seventy-five, you would have to look at possibly pledging sales tax revenues or things like that, as far as what you're looking at for debt, debt covered ratio right now. So we require a one point two five times to meet the debt, debt covered ratio. So if you did sales tax, it would easily, whatever you needed, if you need six hundred, seven hundred, but that's I don't know if you can actually make the bands. Yeah, that was a little bit of analysis. On the bottom, it would be the C W, like the clean water, the C W numbers, I don't know why they put C W in there. But yeah, those, those rates that are there at the bottom are what they are as of this month. Now, they obviously will fluctuate based on market.
Are you locked into that loan, whether you get it, or can it fluctuate throughout the loan?
No, that is not great.
When you get the loan, it stays at that?
That, that interest rate is locked in at that, at that time, that's the lowest close. It's not very, no, it's better than my fucking interest rate, I'll tell you that. But did y'all have any questions for me, or, and it was pretty early on, but we just wanted to come to y'all and kind of present what we could offer. And then if there are any questions after the fact, you know, my business card, and then I also have to communication with Melissa, so she can always, if y'all figure anything out after the fact, so. You can also, if you do end up getting a loan with us, and you don't, and you are looking into other funding through REAP grants, through your COG, IHS funding, travel funding, we do work with those other funding sources. So if you get a loan, and if you get the other funding sources after the loan has closed, you can use those other funding sources before you finally disperse with us. And then you can be obligated, all that, the rest of the funds, and have to lower the amount of your payments by the end of the loan. So that would help as well.
Any questions? Questions, girls? And so this will be a no-action item.
Yeah, one more question. The moment we decide to apply for this loan, to the moment that we sign the papers, how long does that take normally?
Typically, from the time that you file the application, it can take thirty days to get bored. We, we like to have the application thirty days before we get bored, then we go to board. And then from there, you can close within two weeks. It depends on how ready you are to proceed at that time.
Where do we need to be at to proceed?
That is, so you will need a bond counsel for that, because they will be the ones that will help prepare the legal documents and... Did you turn him on? Sorry, Micah, I apologize. I knew it started with an M, but I wanted to say Michael, not Micah. He knows there's several bond counsels. You guys last used, I think, Brooks or Wyman, I can't remember which. And they're five, I...
Several years ago.
Yeah, several years ago. And we, we work with both of those bond counsels. We also work with Jacob Bauschler. We can give you a list of bond counsels, if that would help. So you guys can decide which ones you want to use. You don't necessarily have to go with the ones that you use in the house. You don't have to have a financial advisor, it's not an obligation, but a bond counsel is. And then from there, so, once you get the application, we can go to board, that's thirty days, you can close within two weeks later, as long as we have all the documents that we need, and the engineers have everything that they need. So typically, that can happen within two weeks, and then we set the interest rates as well. So it can relatively happen, so say if you were to actually do this, I would say it probably, most likely, the earliest right now would probably be the July board, because there's a resolution that would have to happen, which would be probably your next board meeting typically. So it might be the July board, then you could probably go to the earliest right now, if you move forward. As of right now.
And then as for the Wellington sewer project, are there any grant options that you think would be beneficial for us, or that we could even apply for?
So right now, the, our loan forgiveness has, for this year, we've already put that in at the beginning of this year. So that'll start up again in March of next year. We'll do a call of projects, and we'll basically reach out if you guys are set up for our gov delivery. And we can send you a link for that, to sign up for that if you're not already there. I think Shelby is already there, has that link?
On the priority list?
No, it's a, you get a mass email from our marketing reach out person that says when we have certain things, I don't know if you've already signed up for that, but if not, we can give you that one for you and Melissa. And that will do our loan forgiveness process for next fiscal year. To where you could potentially get a one point five, that's based on having all the documents, that would be engineering documents, application, and everything with that. And we can give you a list of all the stuff for that. And that would be almost one point five in loan forgiveness. But again, there's also, you can reach out to your COG, your travel, Indian Health Services and stuff like that. You can also possibly transfer funding through them. Your COG may be able to help you with some grants there. Or we can even give you a link to our books that give you places to vote for grants as well.
I love that.
Okay. Remember this time, I'll get you. So, um, I know there's, there's a whole bunch of information out there, and it's hard to find it all in search of not the time.
It is.
Uh, there's also, ORWA does a WAKE grant as well for a hundred thousand. Um, and I don't know when, um, they have their window open, but I can find out. I don't know who their contact person is, although I'm trying to. But we can give you that information. And they, they help in all aspects of stuff, or even helping with audits.
I think we did the WAKE grant for the meeting, right? So at least somebody here is familiar with the WAKE. I wasn't here at that point, but, I think that's all the questions. I know I'm gonna ask you guys.
Yeah. If, if there's more, feel free to reach out to both of us, or, you know, you, Alexis, she, she'll. Yes, you can always ask me later. If she can't, if she doesn't know the answer, we can almost find out the answers for it, yes. Okay. You guys who we have for engineering for that, right, for Wellington Ghost, uh, Associates, it's Stephen Ghost. Is that still on there?
Yeah.
Any other questions in the doctor? Well, we appreciate you guys being here.
Thank you.
Yes, that was really basically, so no action taken on nine. Uh, ten is consideration discussion and possible action concerning approving a thirty day R V stay for Darren and Amy Rappin. Who will be staying in a twenty seven foot, two thousand and seven, eighty Z J R V.
They came in before the meeting, decided they didn't like the, or rules and regulations, so they are staying for a week, which means they don't need to work through the group, and don't need any action.
All right. We will be on then. I will let in consideration discussion and possible action concerning the proposed pavement located at one eighteen South East.
It's Mary.
I don't know. I know, as he said, Nathan said, the only thing to do is just get the stuff out that he wants out of there, and you'll probably let the roof collapse inside the house, and just try to get rid of the grudge.
I've attached the email, we interacted with that O C P A grant, they were looking for the dumpsters, or at least, like, a majority of the dumpsters that they needed, but we did not get it. And the application for that grant doesn't look again until March of twenty twenty-six. So I didn't know if you guys wanted to.
It's just hard not having that grant to provide the dumpsters. That's what we were banking on, was that grant for the dumpsters to get, to help you.
Me too.
To help and we want, I mean.
Maybe it's charges that's what.
Well, they would charge us three twenty-five, or a.
Three fifty.
Three fifty a dumpster. I don't know if they would be the same. I don't know if we could get that rate for an abatement, unless you would be able to do abatement, you know what I mean? I don't know if we could get that rate and then give it to a, I don't know the realities and that, so I don't want to say probably the price.
Unless it's one of those things where we figure out how they can prepay for that dumpster, and then we order it. The hard part there is, there's also weight restrictions on it. So if there's anything over that weight restriction, that would be on us, and you, I, I feel like if we start providing a dumpster for one, it's just going to say that we're going to have to provide a dumpster forever.
Well, he's willing to just let it drop into the middle of the house.
We don't really want that to happen, though.
Yeah.
We're trying to prevent, just, you know, like in a, I saw.
Yeah, we would like for it to safely come down the meals, not want to just wait till it falls, because then we still have the disposal asset there.
Well, he'd be letting the roof down gradually. I mean, it's not like he's gonna, you know, to.
I don't, I don't have to say let, personally, honestly.
Unless he's bringing in equipment to do something.
He was a roper, so I'm sure he knows how to. Do that kind of stuff. I don't.
The hard part, this is one that we've been working on for years.
Since January of twenty twenty.
Whenever, never had word from, uh.
It's pressure?
No.
No.
G K?
Yeah.
No, he hasn't given them on that.
They'll do it for the town, you're gonna do it for them. They'll do it if it's hard, if it's down.
Oh, well, okay. I mean, I've, you know, I think I talked to Shelley. You know, I would, uh, volunteer my guys to, to do it, but it was the issue of, you know, I didn't want to pay for the dumpster, and I didn't want to have to pay for the transportation of coming in here and hauling it back.
Oh, yeah, well, you do that cost.
Yeah. And that's what we were hoping this grant would take care of, at least would take care of the dumpster part.
Yeah.
Because I think we got to get it hauled, it'd be like, like, two fifty, one way. That's about it, that's.
Yeah, and he charged us a flat rate.
Yeah. I don't know. I mean, I didn't know it would cost anything except, you know, just would cost anything. Long as Troy do it.
There is also the option of getting the work taken care of, possibly setting up a payment plan, rather than putting it on the taxes. I mean, there are ways to work with the property owners. I just think it's dangerous, my personal opinion. I think it's dangerous to just let it sit falling on itself.
Absolutely.
So, there, there are options. I just wish, would, would, wish we would not grant you.
So, you would almost have to, uh, be under something, contract.
You would have to be out the work, yes.
Yes and no. I mean, if Skip's, if Skip's willing to, well, and told Troy to come do it.
I was teasing.
All right, he shook his head, yes, I saw.
That guy isn't capable of operating the frac over.
I mean, is, is that something that we can set up a payment plan for the disposing of it? To, to get, to get things going? I mean, is that an option for you to, to set up?
I have no idea. We must let talk with him too, so.
What do you mean, the disposing of it?
Like, to, to haul it off?
The dumpster cost?
Yeah.
The dumpster cost?
I'm fine.
And the fire department can't burn it down.
I hate it. I mean, technically, there's, I mean, if it didn't have the shingles and stuff on it, but the other side of that is it's way too close to other structures, for them to be able to get any, my assumption, to be able to get any type of, you know.
We're running the back four.
So how do you guys feel about trying to set up a payment plan for the disposal? If you're willing to, to do some labor to try to get a payment plan for the disposal?
Yeah, whatever, you know, if she wants to talk to me.
Table her, let her talk to you.
Yeah, we tabled it. I mean, that's, we'll have to table it.
Does, does that sound good to you? Like, can, can we bring it back next month and have a, like, can you get with Alyssa between now and the next meeting and say, we can afford X dollars a month on a payment plan to pay for the dumpsters, and we get that going next month? And if we don't have that place, I think, I think we're left with having to do an abatement on it. I mean, it is a hazard. There are entirely too many people, animal, things running around, and it scares me. Even for Nathan to be in there, it concerns me.
I worry about him, I think, giving it to him.
It's that.
How many dumpster loads is it going to take?
Uh, we were under the assumption to do, what, like, four or five, thirty or dumb stuff?
I think it, I, I think I kind of sized it up over something that's already been done. I think it's gonna be, I think it's gonna be at least eight, at least forty footers.
Thirty, about the.
For the house?
Yeah.
Why? He's even eating some of the wood, aren't we?
It's one dumpster for it.
How do you do that? What is the?
She's story, how to do it.
There's a lot of air in there.
Yeah, it's like, never sounds like Australia, Australia.
No, it's twenty-eight, just got it, we're at the front end here, and that's twenty-eight hundred dollars if it is a, if we ever come out to a cost of what I'm bringing up for. I don't think it's that costly, but I don't think so technically. Just depending on who, who, who loads it.
I mean, you're guiding. We gotta make sure we got it down fine.
I listen to my grandpa cuss about voiding, and dumpsters for thirty years. You want me to guide him, I will. Perfect guide. Boy, there's a boy.
So I'm gonna make a motion then, that we table this to next month, requesting that Mary and Nathan come up with an idea of what they can order as a payment plan, uh, for the dumpster disposal of it, and it needs to be done prior to next month's meeting. Like, we need numbers over next month. Okay, motion has been made and accepted. Oliver, Mary, Terry?
Yeah.
Skip?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Shawn is yes. Thank you. If you have any questions, don't hesitate to reach out to one of us. We'll, we'll help do whatever we can help do. Okay. All right, number twelve, consideration discussion and possible action concerning the condition of the one hundred block of North Connie Road, and the possibility of purchasing gravel floor and or utilizing county hours to grade this way.
It is before the, like, the construction, the, 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 as something close, it is before that.
I didn't, I did call Alyssa, because my grader called the national, how far could we go in there? That's why we haven't been grading, because we thought that it was awful. So Alyssa did some research today, and it's before that Culver Bridge area, we still maintain, and Alyssa took some additional pictures.
Oh, yeah.
And, I mean, I know grader like Troy is, but, you know, I really don't know how much rocks we, we put on there for essentially a driveway. My thought process. It, it looks a little different now than what these pictures appear.
It is a little different. I don't know how much gravel it needs, so.
Can't, I, so what I've been looking at, I've been drawing it out, so I think maybe what I need to do is just go ahead and go get all my asphalt chunks, and just go ahead and fill it in, and, and just, and just be, and then I may have to have somebody come, and not grade, but maybe, I'll fix it the best I can, but now that it's dried a little bit, I think I just need some asphalt down in it. With, I'll just dump a bunch over there, and I'll just get it correct, and kick it in there with my bat boat, and I'll try to repair it.
Do you, do you want Alyssa to request grading first, or do you want to do it?
I think I'd rather do it first.
Okay.
Pretty bad. It's real bad.
Okay. So then, for the time being, we really don't need any of this line, right, because I'm saying, you think that we can handle it with what we have currently, not needing anymore?
Some gravel, or gravel, or requests for gravel and everything?
Yes.
Get gravel afterwards. Couple of, not, not, not building, just a couple of, no trucks for the gravel over there, just by my building. Or, I'm just, I'm gonna try to work it, work again, because I don't think the gravel, I don't think the, the grader can give any justice right now.
Yeah, I mean, I mean.
It is, it is. It's gonna take a lot of. Just a couple of loads of gravel, if I can get those, I think I can handle it.
Okay, and you want those in your storage area, not at the location?
Yeah, I'll just make it back to water barn.
Okay. Any one make a motion on that?
I'll make a motion that we give him a couple of loads of gravel for water barn, to repair the strip, second it.
And use county hours to smooth it after finish? Okay. Sorry, I want to pay for Terry.
Yes.
Skip?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
And I'm gonna have to stay. All right, I have number thirteen, consideration discussion, possible action concerning the deed of the town's water well located on the property owned by John and Shelley Keaton. They have requested that we, uh, deed this water well over to them, that is located near their property, on their property.
On their property.
It just saved a lot of headaches, you know?
I don't, we, we can't, we can't just deed the property, or, I mean, there's a whole process.
Yeah, I'll have to, I'll have to dispute it, like, maybe we can figure out something, where they.
And I think we meter it, like, we do the rest of the meters, and let the rest of the water wells, and let them use any, we can get a meter though. And then they can still continue to use it for whatever they're using it for. But, yeah, we, we can't.
Agriculture, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
We can't just, and, and they would pay the, the bulk rate of whatever the other water wells are.
Well, we charge everyone in town to use this well on Oklahoma Avenue, five dollars per thousand, but John and Renee also paid the electric bill for the pump for that well. And I feel like that is a cost that if they're gonna pay it, maybe they shouldn't pay as much for the well water, or vice versa. I don't think that they should have to pay the electric bill for it, and pay the cost of the water.
Do we know what the water well electric bill runs?
I do know.
Do we pay no water bill on the other, on any of the other ones?
Yeah, the one on Oklahoma.
So what is that one, mine, come on? I mean, that would be mine, I mean, yeah, I'm, I'm.
Well, we did it, we did it wells before.
Well, I think the one that was deeded was deemed unusable.
I've got, I've got all these deeded.
Alyssa?
Yes, ma'am.
Right here?
Yes, I've got the deeded. When I looked at property, Martin Porter said, here's a deed of that water well, and don't lose it. It's been registered.
Oh, that's hilarious, oh, the other day.
Yeah, Culver, my heart, Jesus, yeah.
Am I correct, and then we just can't?
No, I'm just gonna leave it right now. I guess I'm lucky. Reporter's lucky. No, I ended up in here.
So I'm, I mean, really, there's no action to be taken on this one, and I think maybe we bring it next month to evaluate what the electric bill is costing on the other water well, to figure out it, and what the cunes will be charged for water usage at that moment.
But, uh, I think we should try, yeah, well, there's longer you can drive to go for, so. I mean, we're busy near the, the city owns the well.
Yes.
I wonder if they get the well that's on their property. Well, it's an old well, probably forty, fifty years old, that we used to, how many gallons did we have, what, five or six? That we, they piped in the water tower.
Okay.
Before we had even a purification system.
Okay.
And this is just one of the wells that's out there in the middle of this place.
Do we still use that?
We don't use it for, uh, we don't, city doesn't use it.
Okay.
And we've got an issue with, uh, our, our, we got the, about, about.
More caution. Yeah, it's just, yeah, it's just, there's a, that's a side of town that don't use that much water, so it don't fluctuate very much over there, so I do have flush out there on that side of town, but this, this well, this particular well has a town valve inside of it, which used to feed.
which used to feed, the well fed the valve that ran to the water tower. So, um, there is a live water valve inside that, inside there. So, I do flush from time to time out there on that and, uh.
I don't know if we'll be able to anymore.
Oh, yeah, we can be wherever we want out there because we got a rideaway. But, uh, but we just need to, uh.
As long as it stays on the rideaway.
Yeah. Well, we're in a rideaway. We can always go to that point, no matter what we need to do. What we have to call the sheriff or whatever we have to do, we'll always have access to it. But I don't think we have to do that, but.
I don't think we have to do that.
No, I don't either, but I just, I don't, I don't understand even what's going on. Maybe we just need to get electric bills and, and everything. And then I can show you on the map where it's at and stuff. And then just go from there. It's just in a rideaway. Um, there's water line, there's a water line in there. So, if that well was to ever be gone away, I would say that that water line would need to be taken out. There's a lot of different things that we need to come play in that, in that.
Is it, do you assume all that, that water well could, would be used in an emergency?
You know, I always think about, uh, somewhere, I know, I've never not had anything to drink.
Well, we're still, we're still more of a downtown than that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're all over town here. Where you want, right, you know, South Street?
Yes, sir.
There's one on Park.
There's four. There's one in Matthew, Matthew Teans, you know, I don't know, I just heard that all these wells were burnt, were burnt quite a while back just in, just in case we get back to, um, use them. But I've heard that no well in the town is set up like what would be like what Ripley would have. Uh, Ripley would have a well that would be able to sustain their town. Uh, they say none of these wells are like that. They have one well that sustains their town evidently. You know, we have multiple, so the water's, so actually it's really not even a good water source.
Yeah.
You know, for today in time, I mean, back nineteen twenty, it was, you know, tough times, but, it's not, nothing we would wanna desire to do. I would wanna maintain it.
If we type it?
I'm sorry.
If we type it?
We, we've not done anything on it, especially. Would you like to stick up? Is that your motion?
Make a motion that we type it, number thirteen.
Second it. Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor, Terry?
Yes.
Skip?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
If you wanna vote yes. Fourteen. Consideration discussion and possible action concerning Boyd Davidson everyday utilizing up to two hours of a lot of county hours for grading work.
Well, since I've talked to somebody about the hours, it's gonna be a little short, so we're gonna remove that. We've got other options.
Okay. So, no actions needed on fourteen.
Let's try that.
Uh, fifteen. Consideration discussion and possible action concerning the splitting the two thousand three hundred and fifty-two cans of drinking water awarded to the fire department through the emergency drinking water for wildfire, fire program with Ripley Fire Department. I talked to C A about this earlier and he was completely on board.
Is he, okay, I, cause Chance had come to me and I, I said, well, not only is it a board decision, but I feel like it should be C A's decision too, so.
Yeah, he was, he was completely on board with it.
Okay.
So, I'll make a motion that we split the two thousand three hundred and fifty-two cans of drinking water with the Ripley Fire Department.
Okay.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor, Terry?
Yes.
Skip?
Yes.
Susan? If you wanna vote yes. Sixteen. Consideration discussion and possible action concerning approving the payment of one thousand six hundred and fifty dollars to International Municipal Association from the fiscal year twenty-five fire department budget. Uh, C A had me put this one on the agenda, uh, in the chances that it would not be picked up by the county to be able to move it forward. And the county approved that code for today, so we really don't need to do anything on that. Press. Okay. Seventeen. Consideration discussion and possible action concerning the, concerning updating the C I P Local Paying Activities Committee, committee established members. Uh, in practice, we have a list of current members and we need to update that.
Yeah, I wasn't sure. I mean, I assumed that Jeff probably wasn't going to, wanna be on the L P A committee. Um, so I don't know who else you can recommend. But I do remember when we set up this committee, she did say that she prefers to have at least five. I know that much. Or even have up to ten.
So, do you, do you have anybody that you would like to appoint, uh, fire department onto this committee?
What is it?
Um, it's, it's a grant that Co Ed is doing, not a grant for us, it's a grant for them. Um, they go in, they do an assessment of everything that the town owns, what we want our five-year plan to be. And in order to get that five-year plan, they have to have a committee that gets together. One from like Public Works, the park, the city hall, trustee, the fire department. All the department heads or somebody from those departments to meet with Co Ed and decide what we want our five-year plan to be.
How, how quick? You guys need to answer on this?
Like, tonight?
No, I don't think we need to.
I don't think we need to bring it back next.
Cause I've got a couple of guys in mind, uh, so I'll talk to them before I just go.
You have to.
Yeah, just.
So.
And, and if the arena board would like to enlist somebody as well, I think that would be fantastic. If you guys want to come back next month with Troy's name to put on.
Is that, is that an nomination, Jerry?
No. I say.
I, I mean, I would, I would like to see if we could have somebody on there as well. I mean, you, you guys are important.
So, so when do you need an answer to that?
I mean, if we could bring it back on next month's agenda, that'd be fantastic.
Okay, so, cause Alyssa's gonna have to explain that a little later.
Okay. Just pure nature, I think. I can just jot it down now. So, we'll just table this one until next month.
I'm assuming that it doesn't have to be, uh, somebody that lives in the city?
Correct. Anything else on that one? Alright, moving on. Number eighteen. Consideration discussion and possible action concerning the changing to a contract for the Fourth of July committee for the twenty-five Fourth of July fireworks event. So, Jeremy got the quote from Ramo Fireworks to Mary's people came to what we had last year. That total is fifteen thousand one hundred and ninety-six dollars and twenty-four cents. And how Alyssa gets the balance for the fireworks committee account, and that's at seven thousand eighteen dollars and twenty-nine cents. Can you, or can you see what they had for their balance in their account?
Hmm, pretty much a budget. They put their budget everywhere except for capital outlay. Um, which had a little, little over nine grand left in capital outlay with the fire department. Um, but we also have small more months for the bills, so. Um, money can be moved within the department, it can't be moved in channels. So, we can supplement where they need to be ended this fiscal year. Uh, and I did print off the general fund ledger to show while we are at budget, pretty close to our budget with general funds, fire department did bring in a bit more revenue with fire substitutions that we're anticipating this year. So, we've made more in revenue than we budgeted, about twenty-four thousand more.
Yeah.
Which is good, so.
That twenty-four thousand is general fund, not fire department, correct?
Hmm, I don't know if we can see exactly where, but fire department comes from the general fund. I just have to see exactly where.
And, and ultimately, if I'm understanding correctly, you would like not to completely deplete that seven thousand dollars to be able to leave some for.
Right.
Firecracker Joe, which is around twenty-five hundred-ish, right?
Yeah.
So, even, even in reality, if you go for out of that and not only three thousand, so twenty-five hundred-ish for Firecracker Joe's and then a little bit of a balance left in there. And if I'm seeing right, they only have about four hundred and fifty-seven dollars left in their budget, is that correct?
No, that's just general funds. Because normally what we do is we pay the largest majority of the fireworks out of general funds. And then whatever boot money they get, parks issue them, they'll put it into fireworks account. That'll eventually reimburse the payment for the fireworks. If that makes sense. Um, and I actually think this payment, these, these fireworks ought to be in a June third payment form for next fiscal year.
A lot of times it's.
No, they have to have the check before they can pick fireworks up, I believe. So, that means it would come out of this.
Yeah, they, they make us pay for your fireworks really different, but. So, I was looking in their own spot. So, it looks like their budget, what they have left is roughly ten thousand dollars in their budget.
And their capital outlay, I guess I should have highlighted that for you. But generally, we pay it out of the general fund and then the boot money pays it back. But if you would like to allocate it from their capital outlay, if they're not anticipating any other capital outlay expenses before then.
My only concern with payment out of like having to pay it back with the boot money, that is literally gonna leave them with zero to start with for next year. My correct. And boot money last year was around thirty-five hundred.
Mm-hmm. So, whatever boot money they would get this year would reimburse that payment from general fund for, uh, I don't think they necessarily would have to reimburse fire department capital outlay because it is a fire department purchase.
So, we're trying to get this fixed down with all the companies, right?
Yes, essentially.
I'm worried they're leaving their money in there.
Yeah, I mean, if we want them to have. Yeah, if we can, my suggestion would be take four. Once those fireworks, and that would leave them a little bit greedy to have money left in there and bombing their grounds and stuff. So, then we need to find eleven somewhere.
Yeah.
They have ten less than their budget, with that we completely deplete less than their budget. And we still have a couple of months.
Or a month and a half.
So. Any thoughts on our debt? I think the fireworks should be ready. I think, I think it's, I think the, the bar hasn't been set.
I'm gonna say something, just so everybody can understand. Uh, there was not a lot of increase from last year on the燃火 fireworks. Um, I think it was like five or six hundred dollars, which is not very big.
Which is impressive.
Yes. Cause we were counting on paying tariffs and didn't end up doing that. And next year is gonna be a different, another one. Um, but it's not that long, C A, they'll do whatever they gotta do.
At this point, with their utilities being paid by county money, they don't have a lot of foreseeable at this moment in the, is that my understanding? Looking at that right, my understanding, looking at that right? So, how much is it comfortable to leave them at, leave them with in their town budget?
Like, from their capital outlay, is that what you mean? I mean, with a month and a half left. C A, you not making any capital outlet purchases before then this year?
I don't, I don't foresee, I don't foresee you, you, um, the, um, what is happening, but, um, like Sean said, we do have county too, so, uh, we can't fall back on that. So, I think we'll be able to.
Yes.
I don't mean to sound stupid, but what exactly is capital outlay?
It's gonna be your.
Any specific invoice that is over seven hundred and fifty, not one item, but every invoice that is over seven hundred and fifty would be considered capital. Any large purchases, yeah. And then if it's an item over seven fifty, goes on the inventory or the.
Yeah, I don't foresee.
And as far as general fund. So, our revenue is up in general. So, what, what is the opinion? Um, four thousand for the fireworks again. Nine thousand from fire department capital outlay, that still leaves you a thousand in there just as an incidental. And doing two thousand one hundred and ninety-six dollars and twenty-four cents from general.
Just line, you need to kind of the numbers.
Sounds good to me. It's my caution.
What'd you say? I mean, is, is, is that, is that reasonable?
I mean, the less we have to move around between budgets or departments later, it is nice. And it would be considered a more outlay.
So four thousand of fireworks account, nine thousand capital outlay, fire department. Two thousand one hundred and ninety-six dollars and twenty-four cents from general. Would bring them to the fifteen thousand one ninety-six.
Sounds good.
Are you okay with that?
Yes, ma'am. I'll play your budget later. True that.
Okay. Oh, she's not saying they accept it all in favor, Terry?
Yes.
Skip.
Yes.
Susan?
I'm staying.
Sean votes yes.
Sean, so does that mean we're good to go ahead and make the order? Let's order now.
Yeah, I mean, I would.
You know how it is, the sooner I get it done, the more, more chance we give our stuff.
Yes.
Am I correct in that answer? Yes, Lily?
Oh, yes.
Okay, yes. Okay, moving on. Uh, item number nineteen, consideration discussion, possible action concerning appointing a, uh, Glencoe, Town of Glencoe representative for the Payne County Enhanced E-911 Communication Agency Board. Did you figure out who you wanted to appoint to that? Jeremy, okay. Make a motion to appoint Jeremy Cooper to represent the Town of Glencoe for the Payne County E-911 Communication Agency Board. Motion has been made, detected, Collins, May, or Terry, Skip.
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Sean votes yes. Number twenty, consideration discussion of possible action concerning approving memoriable understanding for communications and dispatch operations with the Silver Police Department and authorizing the mayor to sign associated documents. So in my consumption in reading this, it's for them to continue to do our dispatch.
He said there were some changes with the way it works. That means nothing to me. I have no idea because I have no idea what it was like before, but.
Now, did they have a meeting or anything to discuss those changes?
Yeah, there was an MOU meeting. I don't know who from the fire department was supposed to attend. I imagine it was probably Chance and, um, I don't know that he let anybody know that this meeting was supposed to take place.
Yeah, I think James is going to, he looked up with the guys and go with that.
He just needs to cover it and the understanding. And send back to him. And they said, anything that we would like to change, um, we are more than welcome to implement those changes and bring it back to them. They will discuss it and so on and so forth, but that's.
Have you, have you seen this agreement at all? And it, and it looks pretty. What was normal, anyway?
I don't think the, the changes that they're, they're talking about, I don't think that there's anything that's, that's real drastic, if that makes any sense. I think they were just going to have multiple, multiple stations where they could, they could, just kind of the way I took it, but I could be wrong.
Now, but they used to, they, they used to track when, uh, trucks would go and round on scene. So they're saying now they're no longer going to track them.
Yeah, they don't, they don't.
And then, uh, auto lane still, Eagles and, or Eagles and Pawnee is noted on here.
Uh, who should I update the phone contact to, um, Jeff, coming back to, ooh, Jeremy?
Yeah. Jeremy or James? Probably better for James.
Now, this contract has the primary points of contact as CA.
Um, and I don't know if this last name, but.
Okay.
Can we add James on there?
Yeah, I'll put a James on there.
And we probably need to have them take the office number off, being that that's not a regularly answered.
It don't work either way.
It don't work?
Yeah.
Did everything else in there?
I've just checked it all, all time, eighteen T, I guess, they didn't, they didn't want to end up in this one, so.
I think we're going to have to switch it around, you.
So are, are you fed with us? Go ahead and.
Yes.
And doing this and will, the changes that we would like to communicate back to them is taking off the office number, changing Jeff to James, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Any questions? All right, I will make a motion that we approve the memoriable understanding for dispatch with Silver Police Department authorizing the mayor to sign associated documents.
Okay.
Motion has been made, detected, Collins, May, or Terry?
Yes.
Skip.
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Sean votes yes. Uh, twenty-one, consideration discussion of possible action concerning approving the choice of six fiscal years, if it all is fine and fine. Okay, so we have a few changes for the last one.
So on the revenue page, there's a couple new problems. This, and I only had a two-hour meeting with Matt before it was on, we remained talking about cemetery. So there's going to be some changes made with the cemetery. It's going to become part of the general fund budgets. And so there's a general fund carryover, Collins, which twenty thousand that would come from the management of Union and Glencoe Cemetery. Um, and with a estimated budget for site sales and marketing fees of five thousand. So that changes our general fund budget a little bit. Any questions?
So I had a conversation specifically with the arena board about their request for a concession stand. They were requesting sixteen five for a concession in their original budget. And they have a concession, it's just not really what they, I guess the park read in the concession stand, is that right? Park read.
Yeah, dude, got built on. We've got, we've got a little building.
Um, my personal struggle is sixteen five on a concession is a lot money for a concession stand. Whenever, based on conversation, they can use things like a bucking chute before they could use concessions, because a concession would get them bucking. They also have some of their own funds that can help pay a portion of that, not all of it by no means. So that's, that's just thought process. And I, I just, I struggle putting thirty thousand dollars into something that's brought in twenty-five dollars. An additional thirty-five thousand dollars. They have bigger fish to fry. They like the bucking chutes. They can't really do what they want to do without those and need it before the concession. Any opinions, thoughts?
Yeah, you're, you're going to use the bucking chute every.
Twice a month?
Yeah. concession, you're going to use every. Every of you. That's reasoning all the way like that.
It does, but again, my, my thought process on it is we, we have one that we can start with and we start having those bigger events, we can work up to a bigger concession. But as it stands now, we do not have events, so we have a concession that's not being used, that was going.
I don't. You, if you purchased bucking chutes, you're going to sit there and look at them for four years.
No, I, I would agree. I mean, even, even not purchasing the bucking chutes and evening out our budget, our budget's negative right now. There's not a drop of wiggle room in that and I don't think that there's the, I, I doubt Founder's Day is budgeted in, Easter, the fireworks, I mean, those are things that aren't normally budgeted in.
Shelley has notes here on the side, does not include paying cruises.
Now, if we can discuss the expenditures, so I put some little notes in the general government personal services. That doesn't include any paying crews. So if you're going to give your employees paying crews, you need to put it in the budget. Um, under capital outlay, that twenty-four thousand, so I had added twenty thousand in there to replace the flooring at City Hall. At some point, it's got to be done. If you don't want to do it this year, then that money can be used elsewhere. You already approved four thousand for Founder's Day. That money won't come out till next fiscal year, so I have to add it back in. Um, and the other services and charges, that fourth, that third column, forty-three, four seventy, four forty-nine. It does include, um, so in October of twenty twenty-four, you approved five thousand for Christmas tree lighting. And twenty twenty-five, you approved seven hundred and fifty dollars for the Easter hunt. And, um, this year you did the four thousand. So those all have been added, budgeted in as long as you don't go over that amount. Now, you could just like reduce that amount and not, you know, donate that amount. Um, the fireworks is not included in this budget. You really need to think about that and talk about putting that in. Where's that money coming from? How much money from the boot is going to come into that partners committee account that we had originally? That account was set up for donations to go in there to help pay for the fireworks show. So, um, that, those are, those are things that need to be considered. In the parks and rec department, your personal services not include a pay raise. So if you're going to give your department a pay raise, you need to think about including or not. Um, in the capital outlay, the parks and rec and the public works want to buy a new mower and share that cost. That has been added in both budgets. And then now in your, so your new problem is, expenditure problem is the cemeteries. This is all going to be new, of how much is coming in and how much is going out. We'll talk a little bit more about that on the next couple of line items. Um, right now, this general fund budget is negative three thousand five hundred and sixty-four dollars. So you've got to cut something, but if you're going to consider the fireworks purchase and any pay raises, you're going to have to add that in and turn around and cut something. Or look to do nothing, you know, I mean, don't get no pay raises, don't pay for any fireworks.
If you have any questions? Well, well, with the capital outlay, the arena board. Do you have a general fund? Uh, for, yeah, for what they requested, the, the twenty-one seven.
Do you have a credit off? Do you have a little credit off?
No. I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
Do you guys remember what the twenty-one seven was for the arena? They can hear you. Sorry, do, do you remember what they requested twenty-one thousand seven hundred for capital outlay for the arena was? Like, I know the concession was sixteen five.
Oh, there was other items, yeah.
You know, I got ready to drag, uh, materials to fix what bleachers. We do have, um, uh, sand.
Sand.
I don't remember several of them. A lot of the bleachers.
Yeah.
We have, uh, we, we potentially got another set of bleachers, possibly. But we do have one set, or two sets given to us for any repairs. It was the cost of repairing it. So we could maybe have up to four sets with repairs.
And I just, I struggle with sixteen five for a concession. I, I, I get wanting a bigger, better concession, but how big is the one that the law feels has used for how many years and it worked?
Well, that was about three, about three times bigger than what we got. You can't even put a refrigerator in what we got.
What, it was decent size?
Now, there's a four-foot walk, walkway for ten foot.
Two, two people drove in.
Yeah, we had one this time, one left front. That's good.
Looks like it's their timer, that building, uh.
The timer's already come out.
I think they were wanting what they were asking for.
PC.
Oh.
Yeah, that's already come out.
And so what, what their request in budget was?
Oh, what they're requesting.
So how big of a building are we wanting further questions?
What the dimensions of the building?
Four, four feet and a half.
Twenty-four, four, yeah.
But it's the internal stuff where.
Inside.
In there that had cost. The building was like eight, eight, nine thousand.
Nine, seven, seven.
Seventy-eight hundred or something.
So are you, are you like outside of like the restaurant?
Well, you gotta have coolers and. Lighters.
Cooler, Walmart for a hundred bucks.
Hmm?
But you can get a cooler at Walmart for another buck.
Yeah, you want to try and clean that mess up on, in the rest of the floor?
It costs us more than a year to buy ice and a dozen, buy a refrigerator from here.
Maybe we invest in a bigger ice machine.
Those are very expensive. We've already went through. We're, we're doing as cheap as we can possibly, we've went down that road and.
I don't know, I guess like I said, I, I struggle jumping on boards, spending enough money on something that's not brought money in.
Okay, we, this is the first year that we've really even had enough down there to really put on events also, so.
No, I get that.
So we gotta, well, you don't have to think that, but that's the way it is. And we've just now got set up to where we are able to do the barrels, the poles, the plating, the, um, all the cameras, the steering rope and the, all.
Only, only thing we lack is bucket outs, which is about twenty grand.
And that's a cheap sale.
Yeah.
But you're not, and they'll use it.
I mean, if you use them twice a year, you probably break them.
I mean, it's in the future plan, but.
With coolers, are you, I'm talking about like the, um, drinks and stuff?
Yeah, drinks and whatever else that you gotta keep for you. A couple of refrigerators, basically.
And your, your freezers, yeah.
To me, coolers would be like those bigger walking tooling they buy for refrigerators.
With the ice box and, you know, a freezer so we can store our food and everyone's frozen.
I understand that now.
One thing, one thing you guys might want to consider on the size of the building.
I'm sorry.
You know, and all honesty.
This is a hard meeting.
What you guys do, start putting videos and stuff.
Start putting videos and stuff and we're gonna have an honest.
I don't need to take it.
Yeah, this is a free.
That's ridiculous, a little.
But, so, yeah, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, if we got a concession, that little concession we're gonna use now would be where you receive your entrance.
Yeah, we have this new bit over underneath platform where you do all the internet work and all of that. Yeah, that's, that's, that's the plan, yeah.
Have you considered one of those portable buildings that you can pay out over time and kind of amortize that seventies? Well, you're talking about buying it at once though, right? What if you made payments to bring that number down that can be paid out over time, put more money into the?
You're gonna pay more.
Pay more.
You do, I'm not arguing that, but it would bring the initial cost down.
Yeah.
And as the events start paying for it.
What, what, if you don't intend it, just spend it, I mean.
I think that's not what I'm saying, I just, yeah. The, the budget for the, the rodeo arena is three thousand dollars more than the fire department. I struggle with that, I mean.
What do I have left in our budget?
The arena board?
Yeah.
Uh, make sure tax.
It's like a hundred and some dollars.
So does that, does that refrigerator and freezer go up here at the park? Does that still work or no?
The freezer, my understanding, went out. I think Shane and Daryl used the freezer.
The freezer's still in there, but.
Well, there's a refrigerator and freezer right there.
Yeah, we took the, the refrigerator.
It's in the community building, it's in there right now.
Ledger, because it's.
It's right here.
I mean, it's just.
I think there's still freezers.
There, there's even more here.
I don't know, I, I'm just wondering.
Well, if they do have a play day and get the fence going, I would think that, that's a good thing. Then I would feel probably like it's more fair to allow that.
I mean, I, I agree with that, but.
I know, it's a hard, it's a hard decision, Charlie, but I mean.
We're just, we don't, we just don't think about next year. We don't have money budgeted for fireworks. We don't have money budgeted for any of our employees' pay raises. I mean, and we're already thirty-five hundred dollars over budget, so we have to.
Perkins Roundup Club has two little, I don't know, little, the windows open, they don't have, um, heat, air conditioning or anything. And they, I mean, I mean, they use that every year, one on each side of their runut. So they, I mean, that would be something that you could look at, just. I don't know, like. Just to get started and then next year come back and say, we want something bigger and better. That'd just to get you started. I mean, it can work, it's just not going to be fun because it's going to be hot.
Yeah, and miserable. Well, and you're gonna want to keep the windows closed for the most part because you've got all that bitter and nasty and bones. And you're trying to serve food like I just said, purposeless. We're, we're gonna have to figure out something somewhere to.
Did she ever get the paper?
To make.
I think she was looking for it.
Yeah, so, so just my thoughts, you can't, you can't cut, cut the fire, I mean, the police department. Um, forty thousand, that's set in stone. And the revenue from the police tax, um, pays for that. That pretty much covers that up, so. Um, and then the, um, street alley, you could cut that, um, capital outlay. If you're not going to budget fifteen thousand towards an extra grant. Uh, we always add some kind of income, usually it's around five thousand, so you could possibly cut that back.
Cut to ten, cut to ten. Street alley alley.
Usually we usually do about five thousand. So we could cut it to ten.
We don't want to take out any CD money. Yeah, but if you don't want to take out this CD money.
And then the, the parks and rec mowers, so there's three total down there, so what, they went out or?
Um, well, the, the mower, the, the scag and the, um, snapper, two mowers.
The, the park has, but then the channel have their own mower.
Yeah, and so that smaller mower, whoever bought it, it was brand new whenever I first came here. So that's what most of the cemeteries and I, only cemeteries would bid. So we were trying to add in another, we never bought a mower from cemeteries. And now we're just trying to add in another mower. The one's got twelve hundred hours on the pound, the snapper. So it's.
So you're wanting a total of, of four mowers. What it's gonna be, you have one for the cemetery.
Yeah, one, what actually, what, actually what it is is the one that I, for the cemetery, belonged to my department. So I don't have one, I don't have one like to run in the lagoons. So I was just gonna take the other one, the old one, and mow out there and let Daryl have a new one.
Now, does the fire department still have their mowers?
Yes.
Do you guys mow upstairs or does, do you guys mow?
I, yeah, and I usually run it down here and do this. But I get them those two that I want to ride away to town.
Everyone else does.
Well, I have a driver's license.
So you were saying Shelley cut and out of capital outlay for streets and alleys?
Could do that. That's just, that's just a stretch. I have to make sure listeners know, I'm trying to walk into our park, come up to five thousand.
But in those cases, if we come to the table, with a little more, are we more likely to get those ready for maine suburbs? I mean, do you, you have many, many years of experiences. Is there any where that you think needs to be adjusted or?
Yeah, I think we gave it too much money to the arena. Sorry. I mean, it's, you know, I understand the building is up, but it just may take a few years to get a complete remodel. Instead of giving, giving so much money to get it. We didn't, it used to happen originally. But they should, oh, that's a dollar or an after opening, demanding for that. But they also need to consider bringing some money in to help that. You know, the park has a hardware park and they have, you know, large community rentals. Um, we do need to also consider, you can see on the income for the, um, what is it? The, the wall field income. So last year, you can see, we budgeted three hundred, but somebody decided on a charge of a dollar. You can't do that, you know, even if you're agreeing to charge somebody a certain amount, you can't later in that budget go back and cut it to one dollar. So that part is right there. And so I just budget a dollar because I don't know what you guys are gonna do. I think they need to pay more than that one, even if they're just, even if they're just using it for practice. It's got to be valued at more than about, even if it's twenty-five dollars.
So to get the, the concession stand building that you're wanting and to get it plumbed with electric and everything you'll need there, but maybe have to dumb down some of the other stuff, like maybe use ice chests for the first year and an outside charcoal grill that has to come in for the first year. To, to maybe just get the foundation there and then build up to those other things. I mean, what, what is, what is the, what does that look like for you guys? I mean, is that doable opposed to spending all the money at once? Maybe bring some money in and revisit outfitting it the way you want it outfitted?
Yeah, I mean, that's only choice we can have.
Yeah, I mean, we, we've done pretty good for minimal amount of money invested in it. Everybody that's been there is pretty impressed with it. Uh, and we don't want to disappoint anybody because you get a bad name one time, you get a bad name every time.
No, I agree, and I think you guys have done a great job.
And we are talking to a lot of people about putting more events this year. I mean, life's never done, ever.
So maybe twice a month.
Yeah.
For like eight months.
So how much, you guys have your own separate rodeo arena account as well, correct? And how much do you guys have in there and what's your place for it?
Just what we can make on a fundraiser or something, nothing.
I thought there were several thousand in there.
I don't know, I.
Let's give a poppy on that.
Do you know, do you guys have plans for that? I mean, is it something?
Yeah, shopping the concession.
Because we didn't budget nothing for putting anything in.
Any food, anything. And we're gonna use that to get by a little.
You know, buy the meat and the hot dogs and sodas and chips and all that.
You got a inventory of what's, do you have a plan for the teeth from the inside?
If you can find that list, maybe.
Yeah, I.
We don't know what probably put on that list, so. But, uh, most everything's on there and it's basically some water, minimal. Cause just one thing will take care of that. Uh, like a can of insulation.
And, I don't know about refrigerators.
There's, there was two refrigerators on it with, uh.
Well, yeah.
Freezer.
With what? Freezer, oh, yeah.
So she said there was a little bit, she thought there was a little over four grand in that account. So it's like I hit a little bit of reserve, she couldn't let me in here. And, uh, found a ten by twenty that is insulated, has multiple windows, electric and a mini split. For seventy-six hundred.
That's what we wanted to do. We don't have that. We have a fire building with two windows.
No, what I'm, what I'm saying is instead of spending, well, how much did you say if the very building that you quoted was?
On the concession, yeah, it's around eight thousand.
So this one's seventy-six and it has insulation, electric and a mini split.
What she found.
The one I found.
Oh, she flipped it up, okay.
Oh, that's what you found.
Yes, that's what she found.
Okay, where, where'd you find that?
I, in store. Is it the same size? It's a ten by twenty.
Yeah, that's the one, the fourteen by twenty-four.
So it's a little bit smaller.
We can go shorter.
Yeah.
I mean, a ten by twenty is a dang good sized concession stand.
Dude, I don't know what you're thinking here.
I mean, it's, it's got your windows, it's got a door, it's got a mini split in it.
Well, you know, what y'all are talking about is a wire, is it insulated?
But it's got better flooring, better floor juices, thicker skin. How you call this, this? Well, I don't know about that one, I mean, that sounds huge.
So I don't think they actually put in a capital outlay, I think Shelley just.
Because if you just.
Nodded next to it, what would we consider for the capital outlay? So sixteen-five, thirty-nine, really thirteen for capital outlay.
What else do we know this?
Do you have, what's on the list? Uh, repair to. Repair to bleachers, uh, everything. So my, my thought process is sixteen-five for concession. Can we pull sixty-five hundred off of there and say ten and have to dumb it down some and maybe not make it a Cadillac concession to start with? And that adds sixty-five hundred dollars back to the budget. So now we're at least an agreed three thousand opposed to the rent thirty-five hundred.
Yeah.
So it's, I mean, it's gonna be a portable building regardless.
Boy, you build a building, it's gonna cost twice as much.
Yeah.
Can you get that with concrete?
I mean, it'll take a ride.
It's on the cement floor and what, what, you get one for it.
Yeah, I mean, it may be worth, worth quoting a couple of the locals in the Stossels, have them look about and building the size you're looking for and see what they can do a metal building for. And have it set up how you want it set up. With concrete bull. Eric Buller.
Not gonna do that with first concrete, you know, first concrete's crazy.
Yeah, I'm sure. One eighty. One sixty, one sixty at her, boy, Delisi.
Delisi just quoted me one eighty-five for my pad out of place.
Always plays with this.
One eighty-five yard, six yard minimum.
We just didn't cover McQuaid, McQuaid concrete is the cheapest and still working now. McQuaid.
They have, there's.
It's on.
That's current pressure down.
We, whatever, whatever, I mean.
If we eliminate.
We, we've not figured out a way to cut something, so there's no, no real option.
If we eliminate the same.
Who?
The same.
Okay.
Which is sixteen hundred. When you eliminate the completion of the announcer's stand, the building that we have.
Yeah. That's already gone.
That's gonna be about twenty-nine hundred right there.
But do you not need to complete the announcer's stand?
We can deal with it the way it is.
We can make it work for you. Cause we'll have everything in it other than insulation.
And air conditioner, yeah, stuff like that.
Pull some off of the repainters on the bleachers, pull some off of that.
Oh, I think repairing the bleachers is important, not the safety factor, gross support if there's.
Well, if that's not safe, we're not gonna worry anybody to.
Well, I mean, if you're gonna, if you're gonna need winters and the ones you have are not.
But what we're pricing on here is for four sets. If we went with two, they're ten row by twenty foot leeches. So we can cut that back to half.
Going to change the repair leechers to fifteen hundred. And you want to get rid of the announcer's stand completion?
And the same.
And the same.
And before that goes, you cut this back a little. The sixteen-five, you can cut that back three thousand dollars.
Now we're getting somewhere.
I mean, we're, we're just trying to.
Yeah, we're just trying to get it right so everybody can enjoy it.
And we could probably downsize that building just a little bit, not a lot.
Yeah, but downside of your building might change the price a whole lot.
No. Yeah, you're talking.
What size building did you locate, Charlie?
Ten by twenty.
Ten by twenty.
I mean, that's, that's a good sized concession, not very large, but that's a good sized concession.
That's about the size of green storage buildings that pass. There are lots of, good ones up there.
Well, you gotta think, you put a refrigerator in there or two refrigerators, a prepping station. Then you have that counter on the other side. I mean, it starts going this way really fast. We thought about that too.
Well, and my wife said, I go back and start with more of a basic. I mean, go ahead and get your building and you may not be able to have, say, that three zero percent. I mean, knock their leechers down to fifteen if that's what they're willing to do. Not put the announcer stand.
There'd be.
Are you sure you don't need the same?
I mean, don't you, you work that in.
It would be not, just because the people don't like what they're riding.
You can build a same if we just get a pure building this year.
Okay, so this is good advice suggestion on the arena board. The repairs to bleachers, take their recommendation of knocking it to fifteen hundred instead of the three thousand. Remove the announcer stand completion of the thirteen hundred. And then take the concession, uh, give them ten thousand for a concession opposed to the sixteen, sixteen.
Okay, so tell me how you want their budget from like that.
So the capital outlay will be eleven thousand three hundred. And that'll be then, I don't know, sorry. Then the capital outlay will be thirteen thousand nine hundred. And that will be the arena drag and the concession. And that will be the arena drag and the concession.
Building.
Yes, concession building. And then. The three thousand two eighty for portable toilets. Sixteen hundred for sand. And fifteen hundred for bleachers.
Would that be material and supply?
Yes.
Okay, one other thing on that same. I don't know, we were, uh, we'll have to have the county do that hauling for that. That's not. Haul price.
Man, I can't speak for the county, but I can't imagine that that would be an issue. I mean, we've not ran over on the hours ever with the county. So that would be six thousand three hundred eighty.
For materials.
For materials and supplies. For total budget. Twenty thousand two hundred eighty. Chicken scratch, something like that.
So that gave us about ten thousand one hundred.
What was the eight hundred dollars other? Oh, that's the electric. We need to leave the eight hundred.
Yeah.
Other for their electric.
Yep.
Leave that there. Yes, leave that in there.
Um, to add to this, the fire department for the ten months out of the last fiscal year. We have paid their O G E and O N G bill. Those two bills are now being paid by the county, so. Um, that could be a little bit of a little ring too.
My opinion on that, I don't think we take anything. I think we need to continue budgeting for that because the tax is not a guaranteed amount. And I don't wanna put that somewhere else and get comfortable with it being somewhere else and then a tax month get renewed and they don't have money to pay for their utilities.
They have fire subscriptions bringing about half of the budget. So sixteen thousand. Uh, and that, that slowly increases over years. We'll try to consent more and more. Um, try to get more and more of the people to go and uh, you know, fire guns or, or any fire ones cause most big room suppliers. And that's part of it, uh, being a.
But mutually.
It's not happening. Um, if you think, do you think the arena can bring any money in for next year?
How much?
Well, it's, I mean, we have to guess. That's why the, with the budget, we're kinda guessing like. I mean, like the billion, the billion rental, put fifty dollars.
This is the way we set the rent on, on the, on the agreement. I know we kinda let that.
It's gonna be subject to events.
Right. So say, what was it, one thing, one, one million to rent it, just say, or we can rent it, be one fifty. Or if I were the renter, be one fifty. So. I mean.
If we can do, just say ten events for the rest of the year.
Yeah.
We, we owe.
Well, not for rest this year.
Right now I have zero, so if you could just give us.
Well, we've got.
Two hundred, three hundred.
Blinds tied on that.
By how much do you think you're gonna do for January first until June thirty?
Five hundred dollars for the year. Hopefully it's a lot more than that, but I mean, I think we need to put something in there.
Yes.
Instead of leaving it a zero. But I don't wanna over budget either. Say they're gonna bring in ten grand and they bring them.
Budget for two events and if they do more than that.
But the hard part is, is we don't know what an event will bring because we've not had it.
And then with that. So you need to shoot lower.
Oh, then we can back up to three.
I would, I would just put it at five hundred just to be safe.
So.
Well, that's what you feel that, you know.
You?
Like if I come in there and pay about fifty dollars.
Even if they just.
Yeah, yeah. It's yours.
So.
Well, more than a dollar.
Yeah.
I don't know.
It'll be.
Maybe you can just say keep it up for three to year.
Well, at the dollar, they're supposed to keep it up at three hundred.
Say I go down and rent it and I can make it up.
Yeah.
Cause if you guys have no idea.
So.
If ever taking my back for the bills towards.
I mean, being a purchase practice, I mean, and we can change that. We can make one. Keep it up for the three hundred.
Well, they do it though.
And that's why we.
I say we can still lend it.
From the dollar. But because they were just starting out.
A whole different group that was starting out.
The deal that they did.
I'd say we just lend it to three hundred.
Yeah.
Okay, so I have a total, so I have six thousand three hundred eighty for materials and supplies. Eight hundred for other services and charges. Thirteen thousand nine hundred for capital outlets. For a total of twenty one thousand eight eighty dollars.
Yeah, cause it's his.
Twenty one thousand plus eight.
You go down there.
Eighty dollar yes.
You can pay the rental.
And. I mean, we just come up with.
Five hundred.
I hear you. Let me go and make these changes.
Okay.
You guys did not talk this much in the last quarter, please.
Sorry. So while she was working those numbers, do we, is there anything else that you see wants to be changed, edited?
Okay.
Cause that frees up a little bit.
Fifty seven thirty six.
Fifty seven thirty six minus the what we're over. So that frees up nine thousand three hundred minus the negative of the three thousand five sixty four. It's five thousand one hundred and fifty four dollars that we need to be setting in the agreement.
So does that go into our pain increase?
No, that's a zero.
She only said something about it three times.
She does that. She's very meticulous.
I bet she's gonna say it again.
Yes. Yes.
Do you feel like the new mower is a complete number of that? Do you think it's necessary to have four mowers?
Four, four mowers for two people?
We do put a lot of maintenance into which one is with the park mower.
I was just surprised today whenever I looked on that, that um. That snapper. I think it's twelve hundred hours.
And I will say.
I don't even know how long it go, but I mean, that's a commercial mower. It should go a lot longer than that.
You can buy one today or you can wait next year and pay three thousand more dollars for something that you're making.
I um. I just hate to mow all the stuff at the lagoons with the same mower that. Thought we could head along on the parker, you know?
So you go like. The, the scag, right?
He does both. He uses.
What for, they do both repairs?
The most repairs?
I'm sorry.
Uh, I get a lot of maintenance to the scag all at once, so I, I think probably the snapper. Did a lot of maintenance to the scag. Fifteen nine dollars.
Is that correct?
Like you said, budgeting fireworks.
Those numbers right on the arena?
Yes, the three hundred or five hundred and then three hundred. And I think that that's where some of our safety comes into of not like leaving the fire department's budget and not having. Like having the electric bill and O N G or electric bill and whatever it is. O N G. Having that little bit of push and if we need to pull some for fireworks out of there. But you said founder's day is, is budget should.
Yeah, cause you approved that last month.
That come out of until the new physical. Is Easter budgeted?
Um, yes, um, that's what was, uh, fireworks were the thing that not budgeted. So last year it was fourteen thousand seven hundred. And I don't think that included firecracker dough. You do, you do some from both, right?
Uh huh.
Was firecracker dough.
Physical.
Maybe about six or seven dollars.
The, the firecracker dough should be around twenty five hundred, twenty eight hundred.
Some are uh twenty five, twenty, twenty five, three thousand.
Can I recommend next year you guys have a separate meeting for a budget meeting?
Yes, that would be fantastic. That would be great. So it, it appears that we're in the green now, Shelley, a total of five thousand seven fifty four. With the changes to the arena. And make, making our negatives a positive. So what, what is your recommendation to budgeting in? The potential raises?
Maybe I can wish to have a budget hearing meeting.
You wanna come back and revisit this another day?
Might be better. Cause we should have had the same.
So you, you gonna have to revisit it before the next meeting because you have to. I have to publish it. You have thirty days to publish it before July first.
Well, I'm not really sure what our plan is.
Do you really need to approve it tonight? No pressure.
So. As far as. On the personnel services. Is that, does that include your insurance and all of that stuff as well?
Right?
Mm-hmm.
Or does the, does, does our insurance come out of other services and charges?
No.
Okay.
And that's just for the two of you guys, correct?
Yes.
Sorry, there's a message on my end here. So if we budget uh three percent raise at trust and board. That's a total of two thousand seven hundred and forty dollars. Twenty four hundred to general government. Uh, two hundred and eighty three to parks and rec and fifty seven to cemetery. So then you can place two, uh, twenty four hundred government, uh, general government. Two hundred and eighty three for parks and rec and fifty seven for cemetery.
And then put the rest for fireworks.
Yes.
In the um other services and charges.
Yes.
Any other?
Skip says it's bedtime.
I'm going to make a motion to set the general fund budget at three point five nine ninety six.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion to the general fund budget three hundred and twenty five thousand nine hundred ninety six dollars. Motion has been made in second all in favor, Terry.
Yeah.
Skip.
Yeah.
Susan.
Yes.
Shawna, yes. Woo, pretty good award.
You're not even done yet.
I think the rest of these should be quick. Uh, twenty two, consideration discussion of possible action concerning setting a public hearing time and date. For the twenty sixth fiscal year general fund budget.
So you normally do that five minutes before June's meeting?
Is that enough time, five minutes before?
I mean, I'm assuming we don't usually have anybody show up like that. If anybody has a discrepancy, they should present it now.
Speaking out in front of all your people.
I'd do like fifteen minutes. Uh, you, I mean, you said earlier you were worried about like thirty minutes or so maybe.
So I will make a motion that we set a public hearing for the twenty sixth fiscal year general fund budget. For Monday, June ninth at six forty five P M. Go back, go down hall. Motion has been made in second all in favor, Terry.
Yeah.
Skip.
Yes.
Susan.
Yes.
Shawna, yes.
What was that name?
Uh.
Okay.
Yeah. The next at six forty five.
Oh, yeah, six forty, fifteen minutes before.
Yep. Number twenty three, consideration discussion of possible action concerning approving the opening of the savings account for the perpetual care fund with First Oklahoma Bank. And for, and approving the transfer of the balance of the account. Three one zero 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 five nine five nine to the savings account.
So that's the um perpetual care account. And so perpetual care is when we get a donation that says. I want this money to be used for the maintenance of my grandfather's grave. And so the state statute says adjust the interest bearing account, so it's not an interest bearing account. So we're gonna, we need permission to open one so that that money can be moved into an interest bearing account, which will be a savings account. I think three point.
Three point seven five.
That's not bad. I don't get much. I don't get much money where somebody specifically says to use this because the state statute says you're gonna only use the interest.
Yeah, you still use the interest.
The principal stays there, but the interest is all you can use. So I did talk to another town. They don't even use the interest. So I think it would take a while, a few years before we're gonna have any money to move that interest over. Um, into the, the next line item.
All right, well, I'll make a motion that we open these savings accounts for the perpetual care fund with First Oklahoma Bank. And approving the transfer of the balance of the account number three one zero 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 five nine five nine to the savings account. Motion has been made. Okay, motion has been made in second all in favor, Terry.
Yeah.
Skip.
Yeah.
Susan.
Yes.
Shawna, yes. Twenty four, consideration discussion of possible action concerning approving the establishment and opening of a savings account. For the Glencoe Municipal Cemetery Care Fund with the First Oklahoma Bank.
So the state statute says that you have to have two accounts. One is a perpetual care account and one is the um, some kind of cemetery care fund. So at least twelve point five percent of every sale they recycle needs to go into that account, but the cemetery board approved fifty dollars. So that's more than the twelve point five. Um, my hope is to get them to increase um, the sale of a site. Two hundred dollars is really not enough money when fifty of it's going to perpetual care. So what happens, um, there's two accounts, a Glencoe cemetery account and a Union cemetery account. That was handed over to the town in two thousand and eighteen. And the cemetery accounts have just been continued from that point. So Matt says we needed to, you know, obey what the statute says. So what's gonna happen is those two accounts are gonna be combined and put into this new account. I've got, um, actually I've got a piece of paper here. I'm not taking it long, just so you can kinda see. I had went back to one. I went back to two thousand and eighteen. It was October when the town took the two cemeteries over. Um, and I've kinda broken down to. Um, and I've kinda broken down to, um, how much, uh, sites, how much we have sold sites. So a site is one burial spot, but we do allow a full burial and a cremation of the toilet or two cremations. Um, they're two hundred dollars per site. Um, so I gave you a breakdown of the site sales per year, the marking fees, twenty-five dollars. That's when we go out, when Shane go out and marks for a headstone or a burial. Um, and then donations, we get donations quite often. So what's going to start happening, um, is a hundred and fifty of that is gonna go into that care. Or no, fifty dollars of it and a hundred and fifty is gonna go into the general fund to be budgeted for cemetery. Then our marking fees will go into the general fund to be coded and budgeted for the cemetery and as well as any donations. I do, listen, I do need to make an appointment with a new attorney to discuss some other issues that didn't get clarified. Because our last attorney resigned almost before we got some things started, so. Um, and then I just kinda gave you a column there, expenses since we've taken the cemetery over. So you can see we've brought in more money than we've expended so far. We do have some maintenance that needs to be done to the cemeteries, the west fence of the Glencoe cemetery needs to be replaced. And the front fence of the Union cemetery needs to be replaced. And that's why I budgeted that, um, whatever our new line. It was sixteen.
Oh, yes, it was sixteen.
So I'm anticipating about eight thousand for each one of those, hopefully they won't go over. Your second page is just a rundown of the money that's gonna be moved from the Glencoe account and the Union account. Uh, the G F is for the general fund, and I just kinda broke it down by cemetery. Um, and so, and this is an approximation amount, because I gotta make sure that any bills that were projected out there from these two accounts. Um, have come in and cleared. Um, and then all other checks will be issued from the general fund, just like they are for the fire department, the street alley, the parks, the arena. It just will become another department of the general fund. Uh, and then that N C C F, so that new account's gonna be called Municipal Cemetery Care Fund. Um, and then that's the money that is gonna be transferred in and based to all the sales that we've made since we've taken the cemetery over. So what, as Matt and I talked, we had, so we had new money, we had old money. That old money means that the town was given the, the startup money from those cemetery association originally. That money has been spent down, so pretty much everything that we've brought in is considered new money. He said all new money needed to go into the proper accounts. Any questions?
Thanks, thanks. All right, uh, we're now making a motion that we approve the establishment and opening of a savings account. Savings account for the Glencoe Municipal Cemetery Care Fund with First Oklahoma Bank. Motion has been made in second, all in favor, Terry?
Yeah.
Skip?
Yeah.
Susan?
Yes.
Sean votes yes. Twenty-five, consideration discussion of possible action concerning approving the annual report of aggravated theft prevention program.
Still wanna add any answers?
No, I just. Make a motion that we, any comments, questions concerned on that? Okay, make a motion that we approve the annual report for the aggravated theft prevention program.
Second.
Motion has been made in second, all in favor, Terry?
Yeah.
Skip?
Yeah.
Susan?
Yes.
Sean votes yes. And just the items. Twenty-seven, reports from officer in board. So you have anything? Randy Board, you have anything?
We've got a lot of the wiring done, getting ready this weekend to set the announcer stand up on the top of the hill, whatever you wanna call that. Just moving forward. Any questions?
You're doing a great job, we appreciate it. Cannot respond when their reports, what, cannot respond when their reports? Oh.
Sorry.
Okay. Who's saying?
Um, all's, all's going well. Took some roads and some washouts and had quite a bit of, uh, quite a bit of rain. So, didn't find masks, but think we're a survivor.
This will be another thing to come up. All right, nothing else, we'll move to item twenty-eight.
Okay. Make a motion to adjourn?
Second. Motion has been made in second, all in favor, Terry?
Yeah.
Skip?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Sean votes yes. We're typically a row in the public works authority meeting. Hell, at nine seventy P M on May twelve, so we're gonna call out our little caller, Terry?
Yeah.
Skip? Susan?
Yes.
Tom is here. In the second agenda, first of all. I put up both amendments in the regular meeting, I'll let April fourteenth, and approval of the public works authority. That's what we're talking about.
So I eight, you said that thing. Four, one. On the, one, two, thirty-five, right?
Say what?
You're letting me do the whole, uh, public works.
He followed the sentence.
I'll just set the eleven, two, thirty-five.
Are you looking for a third and fourth? Yes. Okay, so, is that your motion?
Yes.
Okay, motion has been made to approve the regular meeting and approve the public works purchase order with the exception. Of P O number eleven, twenty-three, five for Lomchimy Water Association. For a second.
Okay.
All in favor, Terry?
If you did.
Skip?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Sean votes yes. Side four, consideration discussion of possible action concerning items moved, removed from the consent agenda, which would be that P O to Lomchimy Water Association.
I just need to change from it, so.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
So I will make a motion that we approve purchase order number eleven, two, thirty-five for Lomchimy Water Association. For a second.
Okay.
All in favor, Terry?
Yeah.
Skip?
Yeah.
Susan?
First name.
Sean votes yes. All right, uh, public appearances, petitions, demonstrations, communications, or personal appearances, anything not on the general. Fair enough. Uh, consideration discussion of possible action concerning O B eight-one one road gate for John King. And the approval of utilizing a hydro vac on the P W A water and sewer lines on said property. To get said property lined up.
I tried to open up two of this, uh, um, I have a locator barrow and the wire's no good down through there, so. I told, I talked to him on the phone the other day and told him I could just, I could mark it the best that I could. The only way to know for sure where it's at is to dig it up.
I mean, if you, if you locate best where you can, I mean, there's a variable that you have to hand dig with a O B locate.
Yeah.
And I'm sure he knows that too.
But if I was, if I was to mark it, if I was to be out of that variance, then, or.
Feet off by two feet and they hit it from the.
Yeah, and, but.
So you're wanting to hydro vac?
I just wanted to get like three spots maybe, and I wanna put in a permanent marker.
Okay.
Like, uh, that way it'll be, cause that's through the line there anyway, so it needs to be, you know, kind of.
So you, you need us to approve you to be able to hydro vac on his property?
Well, I probably would call, um, DeWitt.
DeWitt, yeah.
DeWitt and have him do it. What's that called?
Yeah.
Um, two fifty an hour, I think it was.
Mm-hmm, so he can do it in like thirty minutes?
Probably, probably, um, I think you may have a two hour minimum.
Okay.
But probably.
Maybe you think we could get it done in two hours?
I would hope. I would hope, but that's gonna be a little deal that I'll have to get organized with him. But I told him I was gonna bring this to y'all, I told him I could mark the best I could, but I think he's wanting it.
Is it a steel line or is it a poly line?
Uh, it's a poly, or a, or a, a plastic, yeah.
Some steel line or working line?
I have a water line, sewer line though.
And do we wanna put a cap on the amount to spend that hydro vac?
Five hundred dollars.
We did.
Something to send to you.
Seven, I, I think we did seven fifty last time for the hydro vac, I don't know if I went over or not, cause I never seen a deal.
Oh, for the association out there, I don't think we went over seven fifty.
Okay, I will make a motion that we allow Shane to call DeWitt to hydro vac. Locating the lines on the King's property not to exceed seven hundred fifty dollars.
Second.
Motion has been made in second, all in favor, Terry?
Yeah.
Skip?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Sean votes yes. So the consideration discussion of possible action concerning needing the town's water well located on the King's property. We will table that one as well. Number eight, consideration discussion of possible action concerning presentation from Alexis Wolf with Oklahoma Water Resources Board. Concerning funding options for the listation repairs and/or the Wellington sewer project. You don't need to do anything there, okay? Number nine, consideration discussion of possible action concerning approving the water rate and/or fixed rate interest to the public works authority. To take effect for fiscal year twenty-six.
Okay, so last month we got approved for the three, three percent rate increase. And then, you know, now we're getting a flat thirteen percent increase from Lomchimy. And need to make sure that it's not going negative. So I worked it up in two different ways, there's a thirteen percent flat rate increase.
Okay.
And then there could be a three percent weight increase, ten percent flat rate increase. Um, I did it two different ways because well over half of our residents don't even hit five thousand gallons. So I feel like the largest majority of our rate increase should hit everybody. Um, rather than trying to make more money off higher usage.
So hopefully the thirteen percent rate increase, we would do away with the three percent and just make it a thirteen.
Yeah.
I mean, if they're giving us with a thirteen percent rate increase, we, we, we're not here to bend money, but we're not here to lose money.
Right. And well, so we worked it up with the, uh, revenue and the expenditures in those same charts that you guys have for our general fund.
Mm-huh.
Um, when we were just implementing the three percent rate increase, we were at a negative. And because of the thirteen percent, whether it's the thirteen percent or it's the ten percent flat rate, three percent flat rate. Or three percent water rate and sewer rate increase. We're still looking at about, uh, thirty-seven, thirty-eight thousand each to make in revenue. So it's not a huge difference. It, the difference will be per bill, really, like how much do you wanna increase it for everybody? Thirteen percent rate increase for a household my size, it uses about five thousand gallons of water. Thirteen percent increase is gonna be about eight dollars and sixty cents bill. And then if you do just the flat rate and then a three percent rate increase, it's only gonna be like six dollars and something change, so.
I guess I don't understand the three percent flat rate, I don't understand what you're saying.
So every month when you get billed, whether you use any water or not, you get a sixteen percent flat rate fee on the water, a twenty-five percent, or a twenty-five dollar sewer flat rate fee.
Okay.
Everybody pays that no matter what. Um, so if we just raise the water rates three percent and then raise those two flat rates up ten percent, you guarantee it hit everybody.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
So, um, the, the revenue comes out to about the same, but. The biggest difference I saw when I was calculating it was the thirteen percent rate increase only made us a bunch of money. Like during the, this school year, when the school, high school, grade school, when they were using a bunch of water.
Mm-huh.
You made us a bunch of money with your master meter, um, but that's about it. Like, we can't rely solely on the people who use thirty, forty, or fifty thousand gallons of water. If anything, if they're gonna buy involved, maybe we shouldn't pay a higher rate, they should pay a lower rate.
I, I like the three plus the ten, in reality, I think that, I mean, even, I know it's dollars and fifty-five cents a month difference. But whenever you have people that are on penny down income. If, that will still keep us a big green.
And for like, um, I think it was like a hundred and twenty-one residents, don't even hit three thousand gallons. So when I did the math, if you even hit three thousand gallons, it actually. It, it benefited them to have the ten percent rate increase with, with the.
That's very, it's a.
Yes, the ten percent flat rate increase with the three percent water. And it still made us more money, because we still got the actual increase off each flat rate, if that makes sense. So I, I worked it like as many ways as I can think of.
So where you use your water?
Lomchimy.
Lomchimy.
And, uh, but what, what this issue is, so Stillwater.
Yeah.
Is the one that gave Lomchimy the rate increase, because it's, we're getting, Lomchimy is getting their water from Stillwater.
Okay.
Right now.
Okay.
So our rate increase technically comes from Stillwater.
Okay. So is that why you don't use your wells?
We partnered in with Lomchimy when they didn't have the money to establish themselves back in.
Finish it.
Um, yeah, I think, I think it was like, what year was it that they finished?
Sixteen, one.
I think so, but they paying to Glencoe asked us to partner with them, and through that we get a discounted bulk rate we pay every, every month. As long as we don't hit the certain number of gallons that we're committed to. Sometimes we pay.
So you don't want the, the rate is per thousand gallon, or something?
Seven dollars per thousand.
For, what, when buyer form?
Or seven, seven dollars for five thousand?
For one point five million per thousand, seven dollars per thousand of total.
Yeah, seven, yeah, seven dollars per thousand.
But it's gonna go up to, what'd we figure, nine dollars and something?
Nine something, yeah.
Per thousand?
Per thousand.
Wow, that's pretty high. The seven is about prime.
What's that?
The seven dollars a thousand is about prime.
July one, I think their, the increase takes effect, right?
And I think that, I think that with Stillwater situation, it's only going to get worse. We're, we're going to have to stay on top of it with, with Stillwater losing their special funds to increase the line from call.
Right.
Stillwater's now gonna have to foot that multi-million dollar bill for a hundred and Google Center, and who's gonna pay for it?
We are.
We're gonna pay for it.
We are.
Because they promised their town that they're not gonna increase their rates.
Yep, yeah.
So we're gonna pay for it. So we, we really don't have an option, I mean, as, as much as I don't wanna raise rates.
No, we don't have a rate, because if you look at the expenditures, um, just like Shelley was saying earlier, general fund. We didn't even budget in Shane's increase, his pay rate increase.
Mm-huh.
And it's, we were considering getting a loan or a loan, um, through any of the funding sources that we found, whether it's O W R B. Um, it doesn't matter who, we don't even have a monthly loan payment figured into that. So that thirty thousand dollars or so in revenue, it makes it a little bit easier to. Uh, guarantee that we don't go negative like we're willing to do this year.
Well, I'm gonna make a motion that we do the three percent rate plus the ten percent flat rate increase for the water. For the Public Works Authority to take effect for the twenty-six fiscal year.
Okay.
Motion has been made in second, all in favor, Terry?
Yes.
Skip?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Sean votes yes. All right, ten, consideration discussion of possible action concerning approving the twenty-six fiscal year Glencoe Public Works authority budget.
So it is, I think that means you're gonna, you're gonna set the budget at the four oh six one oh three?
Yes.
So all I need to know is how much of a pay raise are you gonna consider for the public works for next fiscal year? And we need to add, increase those, the, you split it in half and we'll put part, half of it in sewer, uh, sewer and water pub, uh, personal services.
What I figured on the other was three percent.
Okay, so what, tell me what that's gonna be.
Now, this has his insurance in it as well, right?
Yes.
Yes.
So I would say nine hundred each.
Nine hundred and each?
Yeah, so a total of eighteen thousand dollars, not eighty thousand. Sorry, I'm gonna give you a rate rating. Eighteen hundred dollars total, so nine hundred dollars.
Insurance paper.
And water. Nine hundred in water and nine hundred in sewer trash.
So then I recommend the rest of it, since if you're going to consider a loan, and we, you can see we didn't budget any money for a loan, but we don't know where the money might go. If we divide the balance in half and put it, um, in, we can put it in other services and charges, half of it in water and half in sewer. And if we need to move it, it can always be moved.
I think that that's a great idea.
And then make the motion, oh, did you make a motion?
Yeah, I, I haven't. So I will make a motion that we approve the Public Works Authority budget at four hundred and six thousand one hundred and three dollars.
Second.
Motion has been made in second, all in favor of Terry.
Yeah.
Skip.
Yes.
Susan.
Yes.
Sean votes yes. Uh, consideration discussion of possible action concerning setting a public hearing date and time for the twenty-six fiscal year Glencoe Public Works Authority budget. I will make a motion that we set that budget for June ninth.
And I would just say fifteen minutes before public works meeting starts, because you don't know when it's gonna start.
For fifteen minutes before, five minutes before the Public Works Authority meeting starts.
You, you did fifteen for general, so I didn't know if you wanna do fifteen for the...
Let's, let's do five, because then we're not sitting here for fifteen minutes, knowing...
Yeah, I agree. We might do that in general government.
Okay, so motion has been made, was there a second? Okay, motion has been made in second, just set the public hearing date for June ninth, five minutes before the Public Works Authority meeting begins. All in favor of Terry?
Yeah.
Skip?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Sean votes yes. Consideration discussion of possible action concerning approving the annual report for the identity theft prevention program. We'll make a motion that we approve the annual report for the identity theft prevention program.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made in second, all in favor of Terry?
Yeah.
Skip?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Sean votes yes. Thirteen new business, anything unforeseen. Brings us to fourteen.
I'll take that one.
Motion has been made in second, all in favor of Terry.
Yeah.
Skip?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Sean votes yes. Hallelujah.
How long are you on, how long are you on? Forever.
I feel like we are forever, you know?
We can't get out of it.
What's the best way for us to contact you? Set up a time, do it the best that we can to your office or...
I know, I mean, we'll probably, you know, probably, if that's true, when you talk about, you may have a lot of them in front of you. Okay? Is that why you want your stuff? Let me just call them. Just call me once every time. I'll, I'll, you know, probably.
Shane. Whatever you're doing with all them big ass hole cameras. I've got the claws on my maniacs.
I'm gonna talk, we did, we ran, I lost, uh, this year. I know you... For a hundred and seventy thousand dollars...
I don't know if it has enough characters.
And I don't know where that grant came from.
Yeah, I'm gonna find out. Absolutely, you, you ever met you? It's got a twenty, twenty-six or twenty-eight inch swing wide over there. So it takes, take the bucket off, and it's made for picking up logs.
Let me see what it is.
Buckets, plates, clothes, and Mike Paul. I don't know if it's worth trying, or if they have them, they don't work unless they fucking put back on the truck. So just holler at me when you wanna try it.
Yeah, I think, but, I mean, we have, I'm trying to remember. We have to put it up.
Yeah, if not, Elizabeth.
Oh, yeah, she sent it to me, and it's probably about thirty text messages.
Yeah, three hundred miles, yeah. But I might make your, I mean, we'll rest in that shit later, so.